Call the town council meeting to order for November 7th, 2012. If everyone would rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our meetings are recorded electronically. We do go by an agenda. Anyone wishing to have something placed on the agenda for the town council meeting should have had it to us by the last Wednesday of the previous month by 3:00 to Town Hall. Before we get to the minutes, something I started, I guess, four years ago now is recognition of our town businesses. And we have five businesses to recognize tonight for their years of service here in New Windsor. I will call each one up separately, get a picture taken, and then if we can get one taken all together, greatly appreciate it. First one, Costas isn't here, but for 10 years of service goes to K&amp;B Corner Family Restaurant for its 10 years of service. So I will see that they get that one. UIDC Altair Corporation for 15 years of service. They have a warehouse out on Tibbetts Lane. They sell men's gloves and boys' gloves. I'll see that they get theirs. And for 25 years of service, the mayor and council recognizes Windsor Construction for its 25 years of service, November 7th, 2012. Rebecca Price, wife of Dempsey Price. Windsor Construction.
Good, thank you.
And passing to Dempsey. Our congratulations. If you'd like to say a few words?
Oh, except that it's been, it's been really nice being part of a small community. To have a business in a small community count on a lot of the local residents, which we have been blessed to have, you know, great support from a lot of the residents of town. I mean, you can walk through town and he's kind of had an impact on many of the homes right here. And it's just, it's an honor to be part of New Windsor. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. If Larry and Charlie, if you want to come up forward? The mayor and council recognizes Garber's Automotive Incorporated for its 30 years of service, November 7th, 2012. Okay. Talk a little bit about the history?
Thank you very much. This was a surprise when I heard about this. I've been in a long time, almost 30 years in that facility. Worked for Mr. Palmer. He was a Ford dealer. He sold Ford cars and trucks. We got our vehicles through a dealer in Massachusetts, so like a sub dealer. Before that, Mr. Bale, Murray Bale, was the one who started the business in 1920. And he sold Model Ts. And Mr. Palmer went there in 19.6 for a job and worked for Mr. Bale. And he bought it now in 1936. And he was there and very passed away. And that was in 1969. And then I worked for his wife, for Mrs. Jane Palmer. And so, well, worked for the, for his son, Harvey Junior, and Mrs. Palmer. At the age of two, and Harvey Junior got sick and had hospital surgery, operations, had liver cancer. And my son is now, so. Bought it out in 1952. So that makes 30 years.
A few changes in the order?
New strains, lots of changes. Lots of changes. And the secret of the business is just do the best for them you can and treat everybody truthfully and try to do-
Bought my very first car there.
Tried to do, I wasn't there then.
Yeah, you were there.
Yeah, I was there.
1975, '76, probably.
I didn't say, I said 1958.
Yep, 1979, green, about three now.
And Mrs. Krueger, if I knew Mrs. Krueger, I'd build her a place. I had to keep there and she was Harvey's senior assistant. And she was in the office with him. And so, you know, it's been quite a-
Quite a trip.
Quite a trip, being there. Been there 54 years already.
And now your-
Now I'm retired.
Your children, so your children are taking over?
Park and Sheila's taking over. And for Sheila, there's plenty of time she could spend in there, she'd like to spend more time there. And I got, he's been with me ever since he's been able to talk, I think. So, anyway.
We always say the Ken is the business.
Maybe one day I'll sell him, you think?
I never. But again, thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you. Just in time?
I'm sorry, ma'am.
That's all right. Hey, you're a working man.
I have a business.
That's fine. The mayor and council recognizes K&amp;B Corner Family Restaurant for its 10 years of service November 7th, 2012.
Oh, thank you very much.
Congratulations. You like to have a few words about the history of the restaurant?
I'd like to say thank you for giving the plug. We really appreciate that, the party's country, the mayor, you, everybody else. And I want to thank the town who support us for all this time we've been here. We love the town, you know, we've been here. And I guess-
Come visit you.
Come visit us, yeah. We need the customers now, that's all. And everything okay with you?
Yeah, we're good.
Well, we really appreciate that. I don't know what more can I say, but thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just keep it up. I'm trying. I'm getting old, but I'm trying. We have Diane Steckel, who is vice president of Human Resources for New Windsor State Bank. If you'd like to come forward. The mayor and council recognizes New Windsor State Bank for its 80 years of service, November 7th, 2012. Congratulations. You were?
Sure, I guess on behalf of Tom Rosmusson and the rest of the management team at New Windsor State Bank, we have to thank everybody for having us in this town. Yes, we were around until, been around for 80 years. Opened up our second location, it's been 11, since 2000, we opened up our second. And it's been 10 years since we opened up our third location in Mount Mary. And then, oh, let's see, Mount Mary. And then we opened Tonitown, our Tonitown location in 2005. Bear with me, because that's all before I was with the bank. And then in 2006, we opened up a branch in, another branch in Westminster, BJ's and Coles. And then in 2000, this is 2010, I believe, we opened up a branch over in North Carroll, area, Hampstead area and everything. However, we still, all our board meetings still take place at our New Windsor location. It's still our headquarters, even though most of us are unfortunately-
In a neighboring town.
Yes, yes, yes. I missed my mile drive to work, but yeah. But we still have board meetings here, our stockholder meetings, usually up at the service center. So, yeah, so, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Again, on behalf of the council, I want to thank all of our businesses that are here tonight for their years of service. Would not be where we are today if we didn't have the business that we have, knowing the ones that are here tonight, but other businesses here in town. And I just encourage all the citizens in town to support our local businesses. So again, thank you. And if you can stay, we'll get a group picture, hopefully in a short period of time here. Before you, you have the minutes from the October 3rd, 2012 town council meeting. They were emailed out earlier. I hear a motion for approval or additions. So move.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Councilman Pierce, second by Councilman Knoll, to approve the minutes of the October 3rd, 2012 minutes. All those who favor singing, I'm going to sing aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, so carry. Council committee reports, public works. Councilman Farkas is not here. Just briefly, they had a, Maryland Department of Transportation had a pre-tour meeting on the 1st of November, and I attended that. And just to make sure that our street skate program for High Street and Main Street are still listed on the priority list with the county, and right now we're number five on the priority list. So naturally, like every other municipality in the state of Maryland, they're waiting for funding of that program as well. We are planning for that maybe in the next five to 10 years. Water in the Sewer, Councilman Paulsgrove?
Well, council, you did see the email regarding the work needed to be done with the water tank, the valves that probably haven't been operated in many, many years, didn't work. And some need to be taken out and replaced. I don't know if Jack or Frank want to elaborate on that anymore?
Well, I can kind of jump into that a little bit. Just going to cover a little more of my report. The, I mean, basically what happened is we got into the vault to try isolating the tank, and the valves that need to be operated, didn't operate after we fooled them a little bit. They ceased to operate permanently. So we had to get, we basically now have to isolate that valve, vault, take out all the junk that's in there, put it in a new vault, new valve. And while we're at it, we're going to put in a drain line for the tank itself. So actually, it turned out we're kind of making a better situation in the vault, because we have all the old altitude valve and some piping and things out of there, a new valve, a new drain, and it'll make a better situation as we go forward with the tank project and after that, too. So, do you want me to talk about that project while I'm here a little bit?
That's up to you. You probably have it in your report as well.
I have it in my report. Oh, we got the pressure reducing sustaining valve in, I guess, about two and a half weeks ago. And then that's when we attempted to do the isolation, because that's part of the sequence of construction. So that's in, that's placed, that's in place, it's operating. That allows water from the high tank, the pedestal tank, to be fed to the low part of town, to the, called the old town portion, through a valve that controls the pressure so you don't over-pressurize that. So that's in, that's in place, and it's working as far, at this point. Next step is to get these valves replaced. That's a, a change order's been issued, and their, their schedule was to do it start, at least as they say, to do it sometime next week. That allows us then to isolate the tank, do the final testing on the system without that tank online, make sure everything's functional, then drain the tank. So we'll probably, we're probably two to three weeks away from actually draining the tank to start the actual work on that. That's where we stand with that.
I don't have anything else to add.
Just one thing to, for Water in the Sewer. If you remember back in summer, and I think everybody does, we had a terrible storm and power was out in some places for extended period of hours, and some other places around this area for extended period of days. Our main spring pump, the electric had gone out on that, it was not in a danger or emergency situation, however, at that time. However, with the threat of Hurricane Sandy bringing an emergency situation possibly to us with our water supply, I contacted Jim Weed, who is the director of emergency management for Carroll County Government, to see whether or not we could not obtain a backup generator. And with his assistance, we were able to have one delivered to our main water spring. And Jack and our town manager Frank did an excellent job getting that hooked up. I want to thank Jack for going out there and direct wiring it so that we had our water supply secured. So, thank you. Thank goodness it wasn't needed, but it was there in case we did. Public safety, Councilman Knoll?
I'll start with the planning commission. Planning commission is still reviewing the zoning ordinance. We're a lot closer, and it's going to be certainly after the first of the year now. We were shooting for October, November timeframe, but we had to cancel a couple meetings, so we got pushed back. We're making some good progress on that. I'll defer on anything else from public safety to, I'll ask the deputy of policy and the business board.
Okay, thank you. Economic development, Councilwoman Schultz?
I had a meeting with Preservation Maryland's Tyler Gearhart and the architect Azola Company, where they wanted to discuss some of the possible options for the dealment as a result of the property being placed on the endangered Maryland list. And they're going to, to put it simply for tonight, they basically suggested three options which would take way too long for me to explain, but suffice to say that none of them are simple. They would involve setting up a partnership, a public-private partnership, and looking at different funding sources that are available through tax credits and grants, et cetera. So they're going to put together an executive summary of, they have basically three suggestions, and they're going to send them to the council. And I think that we'll need to put that on the agenda for an upcoming work session, I'm thinking probably the beginning of the year. So I know we're still working on selling the property. I think there's a possibility that at least one of these solutions might be something that a new owner could work with as well, so.
Okay, thank you. Community enhancement, Councilman Pierce?
We're still working in, with, Frank is working with the consolidation of some open space funds and so forth, and we hope to do some updating of the Lyons Park over on Maple Avenue. Probably be springtime now before we get that done, but it's still in the works. And also sometime after Thanksgiving, the fellows will be putting up our Christmas lights and so forth for the season to brighten up the town and so forth. That's about all I have.
All right, thank you. All right. Mayor's report, talked about the backup generator with Hurricane Sandy for the, getting ready for that and being prepared for it. We did incur some expenses, and I believe our application for reimbursement has already been submitted to the county. However, there is a FEMA meeting on reimbursement tomorrow at the county office building, and I'll be attending that. I attended a excellent Dealment Inn open house the other Sunday. Over 200 people went through Dealment Inn, got to see what the 42 rooms looked like. Galen did an excellent job hosting that, putting it together, had quite a few door prizes. And this is just a, in the preliminary stage, but we do have at least one interested party that is asking some questions about what can be done there. So that's looking promises, and we'll keep you updated as that progresses. We do have a planning retreat coming up on the 16th of this month, basically to do a master plan, if you will, for our capital projects. In the past, we've always pretty much done a pay-as-you-go process, and this will give us, this council, myself, and future mayors, and future council members, and the citizens of New Windsor, more of an idea of what is needed and when it's going to be implemented, hopefully. And it will be a good, I believe, planning tool when it's eventually done. And we do have Ted Zalinski, the director of budget management from Carroll County Government, coming, talking to us about the bonding and issues, and also revenue sources, predictions, and outlooks for the next five to 10 years. Also Charles Day, who is in charge of municipality infrastructure loans with the Department of Housing and Community Development for Maryland, is also going to be attending, and we may have a few other personnel from their department. So I think it'll be a real good retreat that we have. Community deputy? Mark?
Yes, good evening, everyone. The sheriff's office handled 85 incidents for the month of October. Reference to the post office fire, I'm still working with the fire marshal's office on that, and they are the lead, of course, in the investigation, as reported before. So we're still processing the evidence with that case, and we're still talking to people. We've got it narrowed down to a few people, hopefully, and again, we're waiting for the process of elimination and evidence to work for that. We had a, if you saw a lot of cars the other day at Garber's Garage, we had a theft up there, and Mr. Keith Palmer back there was an excellent witness in the case and identified the person involved, and we have a warrant out for that person's arrest. They're not from this area, they were just driving through and decided they wanted to take some stuff from the dealership. And we're glad that Keith was there to see that and did a good job in, in taking the proper action for that. We also had a destruction of property earlier in the month, car window was smashed out in the 1100 block of Joe After Place. The suspects, we believe, are known to the victim in that case. We had an accident the other morning up here, head-on collision near the 711 that I handled. Luckily, the people involved were all okay, they're all out of the hospital, but they still have some injuries that are taken care of after the fact, and citations were issued. I just want to let everybody know, I guess you probably know by now, the county finally gave me a new car, and after about 115,000 miles on the other one, it was time to go. It was a 2005, so new car is out, and seems to be working real well. So nice, they did a good job with it. Also want to let everybody know the holiday season's coming up, so make sure you think, before you go out, you know, keep your lights on, things like that, use some timers, let your, if you're going to go out of town, let your neighbors know and watch your house. You can also call us, just as a reminder, we'll have deputies keep, check on your place also. You know, we do that all year round, and it's no problem at all. I believe that's everything for this report. Any questions? Okay, very good.
Mark? Just one, one thing, follow-up on Mark's report. I won't mention this individual's name, but he's well-known in this area. He's a lieutenant with the Carroll County Sheriff's Office. Recently, he had a real bad house fire, destroying pretty much most of the house. He has three small children, most of the children's bedrooms were destroyed, losing pretty much everything. I do just ask that if anyone wants to help out the family, they are requesting, the sheriff's department is requesting donation of gift cards, no cash, but gift cards to Target and Lowe's, and I believe there's a couple other places. So if you're willing to do that, you can contact either the Carroll County Sheriff's Office or Town Hall here in New Windsor. So appreciate your support on that. West Carroll Rec Council?
Right note, maybe we'll put that on the Facebook page for the rec council so that more people in the community would know.
I can give you some more contact information on that, too.
Okay, that would be great. We have made a little bit of progress on the sign. We at least have a picture of potentially what we're going to be looking at, so I'm going to give this to Frank, if you can keep that and share it with everyone, and I can answer any questions that you have on that. We haven't actually secured it yet, but we wanted to get feedback before we move forward. I, they have not moved, removed the flagpoles from Cybeau Field yet, but they did ask me if I could mention maybe taking the benches from Cybeau Field also to Bark Hill, because baseball does not plan on using Cybeau Field anymore for practices. I think they're planning on using Lyons Field, and I'm not sure if Troy, you know, has contacted anyone yet about that, but they did use Lyons Field last year for practices.
Okay.
So I can get more information on that if you'd like, but rugby and soccer now use Bark Hill.
Okay.
So that's what they wanted to use the benches for, because there are no benches there. The sign. And then we did find a new coordinator for the football team. They will be voted in this year to start for next year. And that, that person is Pam Hunnell from Attley Ridge. So she has a couple of boys that play on the team, and she stepped up to do that, so that's great. We are planning a West Carroll Rec Council Fun Day for next summer. It will be late July or early August 2013. Each of the recreation, each of the teams will be there with an activity and more information for, you know, about each of the activities, and that will be free, and we'll have more information as the planning goes. That's all I have.
Real quick, the council have any objection to the bleachers going to Bark Hill?
No.
Nope, okay.
Okay.
There you go.
Thank you. Any other questions? No?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Fire chief's report, Chief Tom Coe?
Good evening.
Evening.
For October, we had 22 calls for fire rescue service, bringing us to a total through the year of 232, and 41 calls for emergency medical services, bringing us to a year-to-date total of 392. October was a pretty busy month, of course, Fire Prevention Week is in October. We were very proud to say that we had a very successful event with our Make-A-Wish Day. We had 16 kids and their families who were from either Casey Cares or Cool Kids come to the firehouse and enjoy a fun day at the firehouse so they could get their mind off of their hospital stays. I'd like to thank The Times for a really nice coverage of that event. We also enjoyed fire prevention visits from both the kindergarten at Hummer Wolf Elementary, as well as a special group of kids from New Windsor Middle School. It was great having them over at the firehouse, we enjoy that every year. Hurricane Sandy came to town, wasn't quite as much damage as they were predicting. However, 27 folks contributed 700 hours, 700 man-hours of in-station standby, so everyone in town would have been safe for the storm. So had a whole lot of people standing by to help anybody out if they needed it, and thank goodness we didn't need to put them to work. Of course, our Santa Claus details will be coming up soon, where Santa will be visiting your neighborhood on a fire engine. I know those dates from the town newsletter, and if you didn't catch them there, you can catch them on our website. And a few other upcoming events we have, we have a farm toy show, which will be, I believe, this Sunday, the 11th of November, as well as a holiday craft show on December 1st down at the social hall. So if you guys get a chance to stop by, we'd love to see you there. That's all I have.
And I want to thank you for including the town on emergency preparedness.
It's always a privilege to work with you folks, and I think it's beneficial for everybody.
Thank you.
So thank you.
Town manager, Frank?
Do you want to turn to tab five in your report? First item is the lagoon remediation. We continue to work on that project. We did have GMB, who is our project engineer's, out, and they did an inspection of the lagoon. And this is so often the case, they asked us more questions for more information, and we're going to try and provide it for them, but some of the stuff, the historical data, the construction, we don't have plans and such like that, so we're just going to have to go with what we have, but we're still working on that. I would think it's going to be a couple months till we're actually out on the street with that. Interestingly enough, I do have several companies that check with me regularly to see how we're progressing, so there will be some interest in that when it comes out. The water storage tank, I think I pretty well covered that already. I don't know if you have any other questions? you have any other questions on that, but progress is being made. We're still looking at a end of December completion on that, so we'll see how that goes. The wastewater pumping stations, you know, we're in the process of applying for a loan through the Rural Utility Service, USDA. Aero Engineering is working on that. They did complete the preliminary engineering reports and the environmental reports, and they have been submitted. That was about two weeks ago. I don't know when to expect comments on that, frankly, from them, but we've progressed that far. Hurricane Sandy, we've talked about that a little bit. Minimal damage around town, I can't say there really any damage, a lot of little limbs and down, we have seen in our dumpster that people are bringing limbs and things like that and filling them up pretty quickly, but as far as the town actually having any damage, that we have, we're responsible for fixing, we didn't have anything of that nature. Public Works staff beforehand had cleaned out the inlets as best they could have leaves, and then there were a couple of times during the storm they went out and cleaned out. Interestingly, the ones on Lambert seemed to be the ones that caught it, I guess that's kind of the low spot, we had to go out there several times. The wastewater plant, it went into storm mode on Monday, but it, storm mode is a sped-up cycle, but then eventually it could no longer continue to keep up with the inflow, infiltration, which just tells you how much water we got going into the plant, and eventually went to a fill-and-draw method, which basically is you filled up one SBR and emptied the other, and then when that one, you're just switching them back and forth. And there was very little treatment during that time period. So that's been reported to MDE as, you know, an event from the storm, I haven't heard anything from that. You mentioned that the generator was rented through the county. You just remember, we just got completed putting in the generator interlock, so that was just very fortunate. Of course, it was on standby, we didn't have to use it. The town reported $3,410 in expenditures on our initial damage assessment form, which was filed with the county. I haven't heard anything more, I don't know what additional forms I'm going to have to follow up with, but, so we're at $3,400 that we reported for the storm. And due to the landfill being closed for two days, and the forecast on Monday, I was on the line with Hughes, who does our trash removal, and with the landfill superintendent. And at that point, it appeared that the storm's going to linger into Wednesday, and no one really knew what was happening, so the decision was made to just cancel that week's trash pickup, which was then picked up this Monday, and I know that was an inconvenience, and we saw trash sitting out, but that really, that decision had to be made kind of early, and we made it with the best information we had. What it did point out to us is that we really do not have a very good way of getting information out, because we put it on our website, and we have a small number of people that we can email directly, and we didn't put a news release out to the paper, I don't know if anything ever came out, and of course, we got a lot of calls, but we really don't have a good way to get information like that out, because we got a lot of calls about that.
We can use reverse 911.
Yeah.
So maybe we'll use that next time.
Yeah, so we have to, we have to, you know, think about, think about that going forward as a way we can put information out. So that, that was the hurricane update. Jumping over to, I'll just go over and talk about the Lyons Playground, I'm going to skip one, and I'll go back. We're continuing to work on specs, coming very close on that, but I wanted to take a trip around the county a little bit and look at some of the installations. You, Mayor, had mentioned a particular ground cover that you liked, which was like a mat rather than the mulch type of thing, and just see what's the latest and greatest, and that unfortunately was scheduled for the day the hurricanes hit, so that got postponed, and we hope to do that next week, but I anticipate wrapping that up and having that out for bid by, by the end of the year. But one thing we do need to do is finalize, kind of get a grip on how much POS money we have, and then what the towns share that would be, because when you call it all together, it gets to be a pretty significant number. Going back to the Water and Sewer Master Plan triennial update, normally it's kind of a routine matter once it's approved by the counties to go to the MDE, but this year, this go-around, they have really dug into looking at the relationship between the future service areas, or existing service areas, really, and the plans for capacity expansions to match, to make those match. And they've come back with a whole lot of comments about that. And what that's amounted to is they, they want to make sure that if you have an area that's planned in a future category, we have three categories right now, S1, which is existing, S3, which is like 0 to 7, and then 0 to 5, something like that, and then S5, which is 5 to 10, and that's, that's the three categories. They're saying if you don't have a project planned in, say, the 5 to 10-year category to meet your demand needs, then we're not going to let you have that be your category. You're going to have to, you're going to have to finesse that category to match the capacities and your planned expansions with what's proposed in that category, so that you can't just have a kind of a, you know, plan with no backup for it. And unfortunately, that means maybe there's going to be another category, kind of the nebulous everything else. And so we're having a meeting with the county, maybe this week, maybe next week, to work through that. And I do have, I do have some concerns about that, had a meeting with the county today, a regular scheduled meeting, we went over that considerably. They want to get that wrapped up by the end of the year, and I see that as a, that's a big baguette to try and get straightened out by the end of the year. But it just points the level of scrutiny that's being put on things that before were just kind of okey-dokey, and now they're, now they're really taking a look at them. Little update on public works, our bulk trash day was October 27th, and we filled three dumpsters, and just this afternoon I got a report, there was eight-plus tons of bulk trash that was disposed of. Between the tipping fee and the hauling fee, that cost us about $900 to dispose of that, so that's what the expense was related with that. We had an extra yard waste day planned for October, of course, that hit on Tuesday that the storm came through, so we had to postpone that. We did go out on Thursday and picked up as much as we could, and if there's a stray person out there that's holding some yard waste, let us know, and we'll, we'll swing by, but there's not going to be any more yard waste days, per se. We started leaf pickup on November 5th, we have a scheduled Monday through Thursday that we follow various areas of town, and that'll go on through the, through the month of November.
And that could be found on the town website.
That's on the town website, on the documents page. Tree lighting, the Christmas tree lighting is scheduled for December 5th at 6:00 PM at the park up here, and light refreshments will be served afterwards, and we have been in contact with Leonard Shield at the New Wimbs or Middle School to do what performance that night. And we'll be putting up the lights, at this point, the scheduled date is Saturday, the 18th, and Westminster's been gracious enough to let us use their bucket truck once again to do that, and that really, that really speeds things up.
Great.
So that's what I have on that. At the meeting today, the Water Resources Council, just a reminder, you may remember we talked about this, the county is adopting a update to the erosion settlement control drawings, and I talked about this a few months back. Well, the actual hearing on that is going to be the 29th, and they hope to have it enacted by the 13th of January. And the main points of that, and it really, you know, squeezes down on things, you have to go through a three-step process, kind of a preliminary plan, a final plan, and a, you know, an ASB kind of plan. You can't get a permit for more than 20 acres before you could have a permit for as big a site as you had, the permit size is limited. And the days for stabilization, for temporary was, used to be seven, and for permanent it was 14 days for an area that was being worked. Now it's three or seven, so if you have an area where you're working and you stop working it after three days, you have to stabilize it, or before you had seven. So it's cutting down on the number of days that you can have an area disturbed, the size of the areas you can have disturbed, and a more detailed plan process to get your permit. So that's, that's the big things about that. For the town, it probably doesn't make any difference, because we're not going to have any sites in town that are more than 20 acres, but we'll add a little bit of extra stuff to that. And I think that's all I will cover during my report. Does anyone have any questions for me?
Any question? Nope. Thank you, Frank.
Sure.
Any residents concerned? All right, any old business? New business bid approval, water booster pump, tab 6.
You may recall, probably back in June or so, we authorized, you authorized us to go ahead and install a water booster pump up at the Snyder's Booster Station. It's a, the station has three, three pump slots, one slot to pump has been dead for a while. So working with Jack, we got one of the vendors come out and give us a proposal, well, it turned out the proposal was over our minimum for a bid, it was over $15,000. So we sent out a bid, it was, the bid was put out on October 4th, it was advertised in the Carroll County Times on the 17th and 24th. We actually received three responses, but the one response came in at 10:33, and our cutoff was 10 o'clock, so they were not, that bid was not accepted. The two bids were DSI Incorporated, $15,969, and, that should not say Carroll County Waste Services, it was Johnston Construction, at $18,519. So we recommend that they award the bid to DSI for $15,969.
Council preference?
I think I'll fine with that. I'll make a motion that we accept the bid from DSI for the water booster station pump
We have a motion by Councilman Knoll, seconded by Councilman Pauls Grove, to accept the water booster station pump bid from DSI Incorporated for $15,969. Any comments?
Question, has DSI done any work towards the council?
They did the other two pumps.
The other two, okay.
So they're familiar, good. Oh, there's a favor saying, finally saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose? So carry. Go right on down to Senate Bill 236, tier designation, the subject's bill.
You may, you may remember some briefings on this earlier, there's a bill out there that has the robotic name of the, the Sustainable Growth and Agriculture Preservation Act of 2012, known as Senate Bill 236, or also called the Septics Bill. And this is the bill that limits development on septic systems in non, in areas that are not served by public water and sewer. And this is a sort of a synopsis and a guidance document for implementation. The bill defines four growth tiers, and the four tiers, I copied into the report their information on the four tiers. The first two tiers, 1 and 2, deal with areas that are going to be, either are served by public sewer or are going to be served by public sewer. Tiers 3 and 4 are areas that are not planned for sewer, and they, one is, one is called a preservation area, like a, that, that are really lower densities, and others are areas where there is plan for development but only on water, on private septic, so they're, you can just think of stepping, I didn't do a very good job explaining that, I apologize. But basically, the two areas that we're concerned with are tiers 1 and 2. And the bill requires that tiers be adopted by December 31st, 2012, which is the end of this year. And the bill provides for an initial administrative adoption of the tiers by either the jurisdiction's planning director, chief appointed official, or elected official. So we don't have a planning director, per se, so it's, we get it down to either the mayor or me, and I prefer it to be the mayor.
I think you would.
Furthermore, the, here's the kicker, though. So you can have this temporary tier plan, but within six years, the tiers have to be incorporated into your comprehensive plan, your community plan. So they, they have to get incorporated within six years. If you don't do that, then the tiers are not adopted. I don't know for the town that it makes a big deal difference, for the other folks it might, but for us it doesn't, because everything in the town is either served by, or is tier 1, or it's going to be served, which is a tier 2. If you don't adopt tiers, then you can only go forward with development if it's on public sewer, or any development in the town would be on public sewer. So I don't know that it's a crushing blow to the town, but it's still something you'd like to do, and not have that be a string that's loose out there.
Does Snyder's Summit would be tier 1?
Well, that's, now you're getting...
Why did you mention that?
Now that you mention that, going, going back just a little bit, once the tiers are incorporated into the, into your community plan, the only way you can change the tiers is through that community plan amendment process, and that's pretty, you know, that's, you got to go to the Planning Commission, you got to have a hearing, you have to do a lot of, a lot of extra steps. So you want to try and do the best you can with the first adoption.
To eliminate all that.
To eliminate all that. So the, the county planning staff, folks, did a nice job of developing a draft tier plan, and you have that in your book, it's the green and orange drawing. And basically, the areas shown in green are the areas that are on our sewer master plan. It coincides exactly with the sewer master plan. The, the green on this drawing is the dark green on this drawing, which is our existing service area. The orange are the lighter shades of green on here, so it coincides with this exactly. The thing that I noticed, and the mayor hit on it right away, is what about Snyder's Summit? Because that is, in fact, an approved development plan, and in my mind, isn't an existing service area, because the facilities, the pipes, the pumping stations, the treatment facility are all available to that site, or you wouldn't approve that plan. So I have been in contact with the planning folks, and the area that I have, you can see a little hatched area in the orange, which is a Snyder's, I have asked them to switch that from the tier 2 to the tier 1, and that, in fact, has been done, and I have a handful of new maps that I just picked up again this afternoon that, that make that change. Simultaneously with that, I've requested that this drawing be amended to show that same area as existing service area, rather than the priority S3 planning area, planned area, so that there's consistency between the two drawings. And fortunately, because of this kickback on the triennial update, we're going to be able to incorporate that with that, when we, when we send that back in, we'll be able to make that change with the triennial update and have that back in post haste, rather than having to wait a long time for it. So it turns out that, you know, initially what was not a good situation is going to be something we can clean up, a little, a little glitch. So that's, that's how that, that's working out. Again, just today, I found out that, because I had asked early on, what kind of language, what's our letter got to say? And who's the letter got to go to? And apparently, no one had gotten to that step yet, so I, and now I've found out who the letter goes to, and then just today I found out that they have, they, MDP, Maryland Department of Planning, has issued some language that they feel needs to be incorporated in the letters, which I have not seen yet. So this is, this is something, it's evolving as we go along. So I will be drafting up a letter that...
When's this need to be done, by the end of the year?
December 31st.
Do you think it's wise to hold off until December in case they keep making these changes?
Well, you know, things are coming out, and one of the things I didn't mention, and I'll mention it right now, is if Maryland Department of Planning issues comments, and I don't know what comments means, if comments says, oh, we don't, you know, you need to put this wording in your letter, that's one thing. If Maryland Department of Planning says, we don't think your tiers are properly defined, that's another thing. If they issue comments, then you have to hold a public hearing on their comments. So you really want to avoid getting comments from them. So now the thought process is, this is, again, this is just new information that came out today at our Water Resources Council meeting, that MDP would like to see your tier plan and your letter and documentation before you actually... and your letter and documentation before you actually submit it so that they can avoid having to make comments on it and have a public hearing. So, you can look at that either one of two ways. Either they want to influence what you say or they're really trying to be helpful and trying to avoid more trouble later on. I'll try, I'll believe, I'll believe that they're trying, I'll be, I'll believe that they're trying to make things easier for us. So, and then there's some other stuff that they have to submit that goes with it. So, I'm pretty sure that whatever gets submitted the first time will probably have some deficiencies and we'll have to do a little bit more with it. So, if, if your intention is to go ahead and submit, make the submittal for the administrative approval, I would like to go ahead and kind of just push on, get that to them as soon as possible and let them give me any feedback on it. I will tell you that it appears that Carroll County is not going to submit a tier plan. That came out at today's meeting as well. And what that means is that you can only have up to seven lots recorded on well and septic if you are not in tier one and two. Again, it doesn't really matter to the town because we're all in tier one or tier two, but the county has, has decided they're, apparently have decided that they're going to just not adopt a tier plan, that they're going to go another route. And I report that to you just because it's information that was, you know, that's out there, so I wanted you to hear that too. But my, my thought is, let's push on, go as far as you can and then if, you know, we'll bring it back to you in December and if you decide that in December, you just want to not do it, then that's, that's your choice, but you'll be in a position then to make, make a judgment better than you have now. But this is clearly a, a moving, I'll say a moving target. I don't know if it's a moving target, but it's certainly a moving finishing line. And there you go. So, what I'm asking for tonight is consensus with the tier map, if the Snyder Summit revision is incorporated, which it has been, and then authorization to proceed with the administrative approval, which at this point would be drafting up of a letter, submitting information to MDP, getting their initial feedback and, and if it's all okay, I'll bring that back to you, but if there's more to it, then I'll bring that back to you.
So, you'll need my savings here then sometime?
Not on this first letter. I'm not going, I'm going to send it in as a draft letter with a draft map with a draft supporting document and say, here's our draft, submittal, and what do you think? But if you don't want to do it at all, then, you know, then I don't want to go ahead with it either.
No, I think we should.
Want a motion for that?
No, I just wanted to, I just, it really...
Consensus.
Consensus, I'm really trying to avoid having a motion and approval because the process doesn't require that.
Yeah. I, I agree with you, Frank. I think it makes sense to do that, try to get ahead of the game a little bit.
Yeah.
So, I think it's a good thing to do to go ahead and start that process, in my opinion.
I'd agree. Move forward.
Thank you. That, that covers that.
Okay. Any other new business? Any citizen comments, questions? Announcements, this Sunday, November 11th is Veterans Day. I just encourage you to thank a veteran. Should be doing it every day, but Veterans Day is a great time to do that. Give them a call. See them out in public, thank them for serving our country, the United States Armed Forces. So, it means a lot to them. One announcement I do have, I was talking to our clerk treasurer, Donna Alvin, one day last week and we were talking about Hurricane Sandy and whether or not the town couldn't do something for relief. This is out there for everybody that wants to. I would just encourage people I know have already requested you to, to help out a family of a lieutenant, but there's others in this country that are in need of a lot of things and you can help through the Red Cross and you can go to www.recross.org and see how you can help others. And it's not just for Sandy. There's other storms coming in the, probably in the near future that the Red Cross could use your help too. So, thank you for that. Again, first Sunday of the month, Pancake Breakfast at New Windsor Fire Hall from 7:00 to 12:00. It's a great opportunity to support the local fire department, but also if you bring a group, time to sit down and get to know one another a little bit better. Christmas tree lighting at 6:00, first Wednesday prior to our meeting in December up at the gazebo on Main and 75 there. So, anybody have any other announcements? And I hear for German, motion for German? So, move. Second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second for a German. All those who favor her, saying fine, we're saying aye.
Aye.
Carry. Take one more picture. If the businesses will come up front.